Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, November 13th, meeting of the Bothell City Council. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with the divine liberty and justice for all.
All council members are present except the mayor, who is delayed, and Councilmember Olson, who I think will join us momentarily. I just wanted to take a sec and give Councilmember Agnew a point of personal privilege.
Last Tuesday, the voters of this city voted both Prop 1 and Prop 2. And I just want to thank this council for having the courage to put it on the ballot. I want to thank the city staff for all of their help. But most importantly, I would like to thank the citizens of this city for helping us help them a great deal. My heart is out, my hat is off. That's one thing I wanted to say. The other thing I'd like to say is it was Veterans Day recently, and I just want to thank all the veterans that are out there for their service and sacrifice that they had for this country. Thanks.
Thanks, Councilmember Agnew. I think we all share your sentiments. And Councilmember Olson has joined us. So moving on for the meeting agenda approval. Does anyone have any changes to the agenda? Okay. With that, we'll review the projected agenda? Any changes to the projected agenda? Alrighty then, we'll move on to the...
Deputy Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanted to inform you I will not be here for the December 4th meeting.
Okay. Are you going on vacation?
Well, I have to go with my wife.
Have to, huh? We'll miss you. Okay. Review of public engagement opportunities. So there's an open house for the Northeast 188th Non-Motorized Improvement Project on Wednesday, November 14th. That's tomorrow, from 5:30 to 7:00 in conference rooms 107, 108. For those who don't know where Northeast 188th is, it's the sidewalk from the high school down to Popkinie. So that's really exciting. Also, visit City Hall now through January 25th to view photographer Eric D'Amato's exhibit titled Forgotten Spaces. And with that, we can move on to visitor comments. Do we have any visitor comments? Okay, William Root.
Hi, my name is William Root. I live at 1406 243rd Place Southeast in Bothell. And I'm here today on behalf of the Friends of the Bothell Library. And I wanted to inform you of an upcoming book sale. We have these book sales twice a year. And as you can see, it's going to be on Saturday, November 17th, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Everyone's welcome. If you want to get a... Head of the crowd and take a look at what to offer before the crowds, you can come on Friday night between 5:00 and 7:00 p.m. And pay a small fee. $5 for individuals and $15 for families, no size limit. And additionally, we're always looking for volunteers to help us set the book sale up on... We start tomorrow at noon. It's a big job. We unpack about 200 big boxes full of books that we've accumulated over the last six months. And then we put them out in a rough order by topic. And at the end of the sale on Saturday at 4:00, because the library closes at 5:00, we close the sale at 4:00. And it's a mad scramble for one hour. I don't know if any of you have ever participated or been there when that happens. I encourage you to come, if for nothing else, to view it. It's crazy. The last sale we had in May, it was so chaotic that we had to finish up on Sunday. First time in my memory that we've had to do that. All right, that's all I had. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. I've been to the book sale, not the last hour. And I warn people, it's dangerous. Very dangerous. Okay, next is Mike O'Brien.
Hello, my name is Mike O'Brien. My wife and I are longtime business owners here in Bothell. I'm very concerned about the city's budget information recently posted on social media in the month of October. Bothell has a reputation for having a balanced budget, but now we seem to be in a crisis. The city first posted that it had a $3.2 million deficit. The next day, it changed to $1.5 million surplus. And then the next, it changed to $1.7 million deficit again. Who's playing with the numbers and why? In the last 20 years, even during the Great Recession, Bothell has not had financial problems like this. In the months leading up to this, the city manager was on a month-long vacation. The city council took the month of August off. And in the middle of September, Finance Director Tammy Shackman was placed on leave. Tammy was instrumental in leading the city through the Great Recession. We would like to know where she is now. The citizens and business owners of Bothell are looking forward to some answers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. You're welcome to head over to the city manager and get her contact information if you'd like answers. Okay. Moving on, the consent agenda. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor Dur?
Yes.
I'm having a little bit of an issue with the... So it's not popping up, although I think... I think it will let me vote, but I'm having a little bit of issue having it pop up on the screen here. So I just wanted to let you know that. We might have to do a hand vote. I don't know what's going on.
Okay, well, we'll see what happens.
Okay, thank you.
I move we pass the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Agnew and seconded by Councilmember McAuliffe. All those in favor, raise your hands. Motion passes unanimously with the mayor absent and excused.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to... We have a public hearing to consider adoption of resolution approving the 2019-2025 Capital Facilities Plan. To present is the city manager? Oh, no. Who's... oh, sorry, Gretchen Zundel. So do I open the public hearing right now?
Yes.
Okay. It's open.
Good evening, mayor and city council. Tonight, I will present the Capital Facilities Plan Process Committee's recommended 2019-2025 CFP. The CFP committee members met in August. Their main responsibility was to evaluate, prioritize the city's capital needs for each seven-year planning period. They reviewed the proposed project request, established project priorities, identified funding sources, and made recommendations to the city council. All proposed projects were reviewed according to the evaluation and criteria guidelines. Is the project consistent with the comprehensive plan? Is it needed? Does it have funding? Will the project benefit many citizens? Is it necessary due to public health and/or safety concerns? Is it supported by the majority of the community? Is it partially funded by outside sources? Does the project generate economic benefits? Is it consistent with tip, pro sap, or utility compliance? And lastly, any other criteria defined by the CFP members? Future maintenance and operating cost. Future M&amp;O costs are presented within project worksheets. The presentation of annual M&amp;O cost provides the CFP committee and city council with staffing and M&amp;O impacts each project is anticipated to have on future city budgets. Since the committee's recommended plan was developed in August, financial challenges emerged which made the proposed spending plan more difficult than expected. During the 2019-2020 proposed budget study sessions, the council asked staff to update the spending plan to reinstate the depleted general fund reserves. On October 18th, per council direction, the 2019-2020 proposed budget incorporated the following CFP-related policy. And they were: reallocated REIT. We classified three projects to needs and requests. Appropriated traffic impact fees for designated transportation projects. Added a new grant for Park at Bothell Landing Bridge. Increased environmental cleanup spending... project spending, sorry. Increased safe streets and sidewalks levy spending for two sidewalk projects. Decreased steady cost of Kenyon Park Severe Year Plan. And adjusted three project timelines. The proposed seven-year capital plan is a coordinated citywide effort that has a vast impact on the community and its livability. The plan contains 53 park transportation and utility projects for the city. It comprises of secure funding, capital funding sources of $345 million. 262 is non-utility capital revenues. And 83 million, sorry, is utility capital revenues. 42% of $345 million is funded by non-city resources, such as grants, other entities, mitigation fees, and developer contributions. What this means is that for every dollar being spent on capital projects, only 58 cents is city money. Here are pie charts, which display the 2019 through 2025 summary allocation of estimated capital revenues on the left and project cost on the right. The committee's recommended plan continues to advance the community's long-term capital vision by addressing pressing capital investment needs while emphasizing revenue-generating development. I'd like to bring your attention to Erin, who will talk about community participation in the CFP process.
So according to the resolution that council adopted related to the Capital Facilities Plan, we have a period of time where we notify the public and all of the boards and commissions of the opportunity to comment on the Capital Facilities Plan. So it's an opportunity to propose projects and comment on existing projects. So that opportunity was opened by the city manager. I believe we did a posting in the newspaper as well as a message to all of those staff and the boards and commissions that it would be open from late March through the 16th of April. When that was opened, we had an online request form that allowed folks to essentially request their wildest dreams, anything that they wanted in there. And we also had an open house on April 5th, where we had other opportunities for folks to comment. We received 41 total comments. 25 of those were project-related. Others were "go team" or "parking's a problem" and things like that that weren't specifically project-related. On June 20th, we held a second open house. And this one was really to bring the public in. And we actually opened this up. So this was a citywide open house. And this was the opportunity to let folks know what we had heard from the public. In addition to that open house on June 20th, we also posted all of the comments and requests on the CFP page on the website. And that is up there as well. And for anybody who provided an email address along with their comment, we sent a link to this page so that they would know that their request hadn't just gone nowhere. A lot of the requests we receive are actually things that are already in process. So earlier this evening, the deputy mayor mentioned the open house for the 188th project. And that was one of the projects that was requested as part of that process and other processes that we've had historically. So with that, I will turn it back over to Gretchen.
Okay. The plan includes four non-utility debt services. The first one is LIFT. It was awarded to fund crossroads construction. Annual LIFT debt payments are funded by 50% LIFT tax rebates and 50% traffic impact fees. The second one is City Hall Lees. And the lease payments are funded by REIT. The third one is Public Works Trust Fund Loan. And that was awarded to fund crossroads construction. Annual loan payments are being paid from traffic impact fees. And lastly, the 2013 A and B bonds. They were issued to finance Marterway Boulevard project and the acquisition of final two North Shore School District properties. Annual bond debt payments are being paid from 50% REIT and 50% traffic impact fees. The plan also includes two utility debt services. The first one is Public Works Trust Fund Loan that was funded, awarded to fund Horse Creek Construction. The loan payments are being paid from stormwater user fee revenues. Finally, utility revenue bonds were issued to finance various large utility projects, namely Horse Creek, Penn Park Reservoir, Lip Station, and downtown utility improvements. Annual bond debt payments are being paid from water, sewer, and stormwater user fee revenues. Now I welcome your questions and comments.
Any comments or questions? Is that the end of your presentation?
There will be transportation, park, and utility presentations as well.
Okay. No one has any questions? Okay. Oh. No? I guess you're good. Continue.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here tonight to give you an update on our current CFP projects as well as the proposed projects for the new plan adoption, which is before you this evening. I'd first like to start out by giving a quick review of our current projects for the 2017 to 2023 CFP projects. And that is because the bulk of these projects are going to be rolling over as they are already ongoing or scheduled for 2019 or 2020. And so the one that gets dropped off is the one on the bottom, which is the Wayne Golf Course acquisition. I have it there, it's completed. But as you all know, December 14th is D-Day for that. So we're very, very excited about that. For the Cedar Grove Field Improvements, those are scheduled for next year in 2020. Currently, staff is working on some administrative requirements to solidify some grant agreements. And then we'll be able to move forward on that. Madrazo Park, as you may recall, was put out for bid in 2017. We received no bids on that. Since that point in time, we had to go back, do a little bit of redesign. And we are now ready to go back out for bid again. And we're targeting January on that. The Horse Creek Plaza project, as you know, is in progress. The Park at Bothell Landing Pedestrian Bridge, we are tied for number five for the RCO grants for the final $1 million that we need. And basically, we're waiting on the state legislature come January to determine the final funding levels. But we're really confident on that and that we're going to be under construction in 2019. And then the North Bothell Park acquisition that's on there. And so that project there is a little bit unique for us. That's really a placeholder. There's a description in your CFP for a park to be potentially located in the north Bothell section of the city. Right now, we don't have any specific plans for actual acquisition. But most grants and most funding opportunities look for any land acquisitions to be included in a planning document by the city. And so we've chosen to leave this in so that if an opportunity comes up and funding arises, we have it within the plan. You, the council, has adopted it. And we don't have to come back and try and scramble and add it in. So Public Works Director Lenhart gave a great description of how we engage the public and talked about the open houses. And then for the Parks Department, we took it an additional step there. And that is, we brought those projects that were suggested by the city as well as some projects that were suggested by staff to the Parks Board, because that's within their purview to help us determine what projects to move forward. After some really robust discussion, they asked us to move forward and bring to the CFPCC two projects. One of those was the Park at Bothell Landing. And that's a part of the phased project of the 2010 master plan. And that would have included the front fountain, the parking lots, the restroom, and the play area. And then the second was East Norway Hill Park Construction. And that master plan was approved by the city council in 2017. And that includes a dog park, a play surface, a parking lot, some trails, and a restroom. Neither of these projects have funding. So staff did propose that they go in for 2025 to allow us some time to be able to secure some funding for these projects. So staff presented these to the CFP Planning Committee. And there was additional extensive discussion. Parks are much beloved in this community. And you could really see that by everyone's input on this. And their recommendation was to move the Park at Bothell Landing Phase 1 to our future requests category, which is at the end of the document. To add in a young people and place-making feasibility study, this came out of a very robust discussion on skate parks and splash pads and how are we meeting the needs of our young people and our young adults in the community? And then adding in a downtown Parks Connectivity and Master Plan. And this would be visioning, community engagement, and master planning for the former Wayne Golf Course. But then also taking a look at how our parks are really rather contiguous through downtown. And so also including in there Red Brick Road Park, Blythe Park, the Semamish River Park, and then the Park at Bothell Landing. And then also recommending to move forward the East Norway Hill construction. Unfortunately, though, as Senior Financial Analyst Zundel explained, we did meet some financial challenges as we were putting together this plan. And so what's before you this evening for Parks projects is our projects that we're rolling over or that are planned for this year and the East Norway Hill Park construction. Again, planned for 2025, only if we're able to raise the funding for that park. And we've moved our other projects to the future needs and requests category at the end. And so that's the young people and place-making study, the downtown Parks Connectivity and Master Planning, and then the Park at Bothell Landing Phase 1. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions? Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you. So I'm very interested in the young people and place... Oh, I'm sorry, I missed it. Young people and...
Place-making feasibility study.
Place-making feasibility study. So what is your plan with that? I mean, what does that really mean?
Thank you, council member. One of the things we've taken a look at once we realize some of our budget challenges is that there was actually a way for the Parks and Recreation Department to move forward with an amenity study for what our youth might be looking for, what our young adults might be looking for. And that is, as part of our budget request for next year, which will be before you momentarily for approval, is we need to update what's called our PROS Plan, Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan. And a traditional element of that is an amenity study. And so we are going to be able to add in a dedicated review of what young people and young adults are looking for, be able to look at what some of those future costs might be on those amenities, as well as potential locations.
And so a follow-up. How do you plan to engage the young people in this plan?
So we'll actually be working with a consulting firm. And they will assist us with community engagement in terms of outreach.
Excellent. I hope you'll keep us tuned in because I think that's really important.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you. Thank you, Tracy, for the presentation. Can you go back one slide for a second? So if I heard you correctly, the stuff on the bottom is going to go to 2025? I mean, we're moving it out to 2025 or just...
So are you referring to the future, to the needs and requests items?
Yeah.
So those actually go into the needs and request items. And then the next time that we update the Capital Facilities Plan in two years, those can be moved over, amended. It'll actually go back before the Parks Board and the CFP Planning Committee. And we can see what happens at that point in time.
Perfect. It doesn't mean we're pushing it all the way out to 2025.
No.
Right? Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. And then on all these projects, we heard in the previous presentation that out of the $1, only 58 cents is city money. So can you give us a little history of how much is... Like, a lot of these projects are paid for with grants and things like that? Is that correct?
Some of them are, yes. I'm going to try and practice my skills and see if this works so that way I don't have to rely solely on my memory. Hold on one second.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, wow. And I really should have brought my glasses, which means I am going to have to rely on my memory. So for example, the Cedar Grove Field Improvements, the city has two grants there. One from Snohomish County. One was a legislative request from the state of Washington. And then we also... And so this project will be paid for entirely by... Sorry. Will be paid for partially with grants, $300,000 with grants, and then $50,000 with REIT. Really, I need my glasses, and I apologize for that.
Yeah, I guess I was just... I thank you, Tracy. I was just going to... I guess my point was just trying to understand how we actually pay for these projects going through the budget process. And it sounds to me like a lot of these projects, we're getting grant funding to pay for the majority, if not most of the project itself. Is that correct?
That's correct. Or alternative sources of funding. Or alternative sources of funding. So for example, Lieutenant Madrazo Park, we're receiving King County mitigation fees since that is being built on the King County West Water Facility Plan.
Okay. And can you just real quickly tell me, what is the process for getting a grant for one of these projects?
So first, a project typically has to be included in a planning document such as this. Second, a really common requirement for grants these days is proof of community engagement. Is our community passionate about it? And being able to show that. And then in the case of RCO, which is the Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office, which is the most common source of parks and rec grant funding here in Washington, it is just a fairly extensive process. You spend several days to several weeks writing the application, doing the research, creating your argument, creating your budget. You then go down to Olympia, make a presentation. They ask you lots of questions. Your grant is scored, and then they give you the results back. And then you wait to see if it's ultimately funded by the legislature. And while I've said that in 30 seconds, it takes months of work and a huge team to get it done.
Well, we really appreciate all the work that you and the city do on our behalf here for the community on these things. So thank you very much.
Any other questions? So I'm going to go out on a limb. We received an email yesterday, I believe, from the city manager about some REIT money coming in. And I think it's around 1.5. Could you maybe just outline what you sent?
Real estate excise tax are received by the city when property is sold. And we've been made aware of one property, an apartment complex that's sold. The other is under contract, so I wouldn't consider that money that the city is guaranteed to receive. But we will receive additional REIT monies that we hadn't planned for as we put together the 2019-2020 budget. It's about $850,000.
Thanks, city manager. So given that information, I had a proposal to make. While I think the bulk of it should probably go to asset replacement funds, I was wondering if anyone else would be interested in funding the study for the, what are we calling it? Downtown Parks Connecting Master Plan. That way, we don't have to wait for the next budget cycle to make some progress. And also, I think, you know, we've talked about some public-private partnerships and ways of leveraging that to get money to do operations and maintenance, especially on Wayne. So I'm wondering if anyone else would be interested in putting $100,000 or something like that toward that study, which would include the Park at Bothell Landing, no longer would include Lot A since we've talked about selling it, but Wayne. So it'd be at least those two parks. So I guess I'm asking fellow councilmembers if anyone else is interested in supporting that. Anyone want to weigh in?
I mean, I'm interested in seeing what that would look like, absolutely, yeah.
Okay. Councilmember McAuliffe.
Excuse me. I would agree that I'd like to know what the master plan study would look like before I would want to authorize that. But I'd send it forward tomorrow.
The other reason I thought I'm interested in this is not only to move it forward, but we've talked about the Bothell Landing. The current master plan is $16 million, which clearly we don't have. So it definitely needs to be relooked at. And in addition, those three things that are put on the needs and requests list are ones that were specifically asked for by the Capital Facilities Committee. And so I'd like to give a nod to their participation and their recommendations as well. So just a little more background. Anyone else want to weigh in?
I would be interested in having the conversation because what you're describing meets the requirements of what we were talking about in our capital facility projects, especially when we're talking about generating revenue and if it benefits the committee. So I would be... or the community. I'd be very interested in having that conversation.
Okay, thanks. Councilmember Olson, you want to weigh in?
Yeah, I agree as well. I know we discussed it on our Capital Plans Facility Committee. And it was one of those items that was desired to get accomplished. So I think it lends to being able to identify what and when and how much we should plan for in the future. So I think it's a worthwhile effort. And I think it's just a small portion of those REIT funds, so.
Great. So how would we... I'm assuming you want to pass the Capital Facilities Plan tonight. So I guess I'm wondering how we would weigh in with that request.
My recommendation would be that we bring it back in a budget amendment for the 2019, and we could do... Then we'd have the opportunity to share with you what the project would look like. And that way, you can pass this tonight. We can relook at where... And make sure that we have the monies available. And the work couldn't begin on that project until 2020 anyway. There's a... Between the PROS Plan and other projects that the Parks Department is working on, it wouldn't start till later. So that would be my recommendation.
So we'd pass the Capital Facilities Plan and then do an amendment at the next budget meeting?
Yes. And if you wanted to put it in the record that you recommend staff bring back as part of the 2019 budget amendment, the opportunity to fund the downtown master plan, then it's in the record, and we don't forget.
So do we need to vote formally? Or was our weighing in enough to make that happen?
I guess it's whether you want it physically in the minutes or not. I'd have to look to the clerk to see what it would take to... Or are you comfortable with this conversation and knowing that it's... We'll do it.
I'm comfortable. Is everyone else okay with that?
It's in the record.
Awesome. That's all we needed to know. Thank you. Any other questions about parks? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. And I'm going to invite up Steve Morikow with Public Works.
Okay, good evening. I'm here to talk to you about the transportation section. I apologize if my voice sounds funny having this head cold thing going on. So like Tracy said, you're going to find that you're pretty familiar with a lot of the transportation projects. And this is because they were in the previous CFP. Transportation projects, even the small ones, typically take a little while. You have to get through design. Typically, it takes nine months to a year for just a standard-sized project. Oftentimes, you have to buy right-of-way, which takes, again, a number of months up to a year. And then by the time you get to construction, it's three or five years later. So you're going to see projects in multiple CFPs, not just one. So a lot of the projects you're going to see are fairly familiar with them. The projects that are in the CFP for the transportation have been generated through several processes. As an example, many of the projects stem from the city's comprehensive plan. So every six to eight years, when we go through and do a comprehensive plan update and go through the land use and the growth, we make sure that the transportation projects parallel that. So we have transportation projects that will increase the capacity as the city grows. This includes the city downtown plan as well. Another process we've gone through is the safe school walk routes. We had a task force when we got the Safe Streets Levy together. We got school representatives together, and we got a list of projects that were very important to them. We created six tiers of projects, and you'll see a lot of the first top-tier projects in the CFP. And of course, there's the public process that Erin talked about that's associated with the CFP as well as the six-year tip. So if we get input from the public or basically anybody on projects, if we haven't listed them already and we vet it out and we feel they're important and critical or necessary projects, we will consider that putting those in as well. The transportation section, like Tracy said, it's not the sum total of the transportation needs. A lot of the projects are in the back of the book under the needs section and the request section. This is basically the number of projects that currently going to have funds expended for them in the next six years or so. It doesn't mean that another new project won't pop up. If there are funding opportunities, then one of those needs projects might come to the front in the next CFP or even sooner if there's grant opportunities. So one of the things I wanted to note is that our annual capital programs are not in the CFP. Those programs are ongoing annual work versus one-time discrete projects. So things like the Bridge Maintenance Inspection Program, Pavement Preservation Program, Sidewalk Program, and other programs like the Safety Program, they reside in a biannual budget. So what happens is, as the projects... We get funding for the projects. So let's say we get funding and a grant funding for a sidewalk project. And we use part of the sidewalk program funds as a grant match. We will pull that sidewalk project out, and it appears in the CFP as a discrete project. So you will see a couple discreet sidewalk projects and paving preservation projects. And our match is basically coming from the program that's in our biannual budget. Excuse me. So there's kind of staff recommendations on how we put this CFP together. So first, we recommend continue to work on projects that have obtained grant funds and we've already spent money on. So if we got design grant funds and right-of-way acquisition grant funds, and we're through those phases, we recommend continuing with the project until it's constructed and completed. There are some grant agencies that if you don't complete the construction, you may have to return the money through the design phase and right-of-way phase as well. So we recommend completing projects as we go. Second, it's good... We think it's good to provide seed or match funding for projects that we think we want to go out and get grants for. So if we see a sidewalk project that we want to do, we'd like to put it in the CFP as a discrete project, and it helps us go through our grant funding process with the agency that we're trying to get the funding from. As an example, the Safe Streets and Sidewalk Levy provides about $450,000 a year over a nine-year period. So that's about $4 million for sidewalks and crosswalks. We've gotten in the first three years about $1.8 million for three projects. So we're going to look for more. So you can kind of see how that seed money kind of builds itself for the grant funding. So in addition to strict order of importance, sometimes there's selection of projects that, you know... It's not just the highest priority. It's also the availability of grants, how well it'll compete for grants, whether the project is design-ready. And sometimes it's timing of overlapping infrastructure needs. You may need to put a water main here, but if you're going to do a paving project on the same street, somehow you've got to coordinate the timing. And obviously, sometimes there are previous expectations or commitments. Again, if we start a grant funding process, we suggest finishing it through. So there are a couple projects on this list that aren't really transportation projects. And that's the Downtown Soil and Groundwater Cleanup Project and the Canyon Park Subarea Plan Update. But for want of any other section matching it, it's in the transportation section. All right, let's see. Okay, so rather than go through this list, this is... There's 26 projects here, one by one. What I've tried to do to get my head wrapped around this is put it into groups. So I'm kind of going to go through groups of projects. So this is actually projects you won't see anymore. They're on the previous CFP, and we've actually completed them. So they start dropping off the list. That's the Monte Way Boulevard, the first phase of the adaptive signal control system that's going up and down the corridor, 527 corridor. I've heard that might extend into 2019, but essentially, it's kind of moving along. We're going to do a few repairs on some rockery on Bothell Way north of 190th. We just finished 228 pavement preservation. We still have to do some striping. And we put pedestrian crossings at Beardsley and 185th. So those drop off. There are three projects that in the last CFP, we put in there because we're going after grant funding. And we didn't grant funding. These projects kind of appeared there These projects kind of appeared there because they're fairly high priority, but we hadn't done a sidewalk prioritization task force list yet. So these predated them. So these three don't actually rise to the very top of that list anymore, so we're not going to go after grant funding. However, the second one, 19th and 242nd, has a little bit of overlap with the project that we're currently doing. And the Botha Way sidewalk, we're probably wrapped into a street improvement project, which we recently got design funding for. One project that we had hoped to at least lead the sighting was the Sound Transit parking ride, but Sound Transit essentially is doing all the work, so we recommend taking this off the list. Okay, so now we're going to get to the 26 projects. So the first three, we've actually finished the projects. However, they had either wetland or stream mitigation work, and we need, by permit, we need to continue this for about a five-year period. So for those three proj, two of those projects, the top two, North Creek Trail and Crossroads, that's why you see there, there's a few thousand dollars every year to allow us to meet our permit requirements. Main Street enhancements, we weren't quite, our plant establishment period is going to peak into 2019, so we're carrying that as well, a few thousand dollars. So this is the largest group of projects, and these are the ongoing projects that we have started and we recommend continuing on. So we have the North Creek Trail, Section 4. We did get design grant funding and right-of-way grant funding for the whole stretch. It's along 524 between Ninth and just about 527, close to 527. We recently got construction money for the first phase, $919,000. It won't be available till 2021, but we want to continue work on this project. The second one, I think you're aware of, the contaminated soil cleanup. I can answer questions if you have any later. Stage three improvements on 522, excuse me. This is between Wayne Curve and Kenmore. So we put business access and transit lanes in, do some general improvements, better street lights, things like that. We're currently trying to get into an agreement with Sound Transit, and the goal is to try to get out the door early this year for a construction bid, about an 18-month project. So Mammoth River Bridge seismic retrofit. This wasn't in the previous CFP, but we did get grant funding. It's basically to do some structural work to get the bridge to perform better if there's ever a large earthquake. Adaptive signal control system, we did get a grant. It's being led by Snow County. This would do tie in the control system from the north along 527 all the way down to 522. 188 non-motorized improvements, this is the one that, there's an open house tomorrow night, putting a sidewalk on the south side. 19th and 232nd also put sidewalks, a little bit about a couple blocks on 19th, cross over to 232, work your way to the junior high school, a little bit of work on 23rd, grant-funded as well. 7th and 88th, we put a sidewalk on the west side of the street, south of 240th, north of the elementary school, kind of fill in some gaps. We did get some grant funding for that as well. Botha Everett Highway interim channelization. So that's kind of an interesting project. So that's one of the projects that come up based on condition and not capacity. So we have some rockeries, excuse me, that aren't doing very well, so we're monitoring them, but we also have an adjacent potential development there. So we're kind of monitoring it and waiting to see what that developer, when they would go, because they could potentially help us with that. So we're keeping those on the books. And the East Riverside Drive Trail is in the planning phase, and we're working with King County to see if we can get the right to basically build a trail in that old railroad. So those are existing projects that we hope to keep carrying through. So these projects actually appeared in the last CFP. They did not get grant funding, but we think they should remain for a couple reasons. Either they probably will get grant funding or some sort of funding, or we want to keep them on as a contingency because we have applied for grant funding. So as an example, if we go through our federal transportation grant funding process, typically there's a lot more transportation projects that will ever get awarded grant funding. So they literally have a list and they draw a line. So some of our projects are below the line, but once in a while, agencies won't be able to meet their obligations. And so what happens is they turn back money. And if you're right below the line, you may have an opportunity to still get further grant funding. So we'd like to keep some of our projects on there, just in case. Sorry. So the first one is 522, Stage 2B, and that basically puts a business access transit lane westbound from 180th to Wayne Curve. And that would probably be funded by Sound Transit 3. So that one, as well as the second one, 185th Street, Transit Oriented Street, is also Sound Transit 3 project. Sound Transit is going to fund whatever transit improvements they feel are justified. So it's kind of a process to work with them to determine the scope. So your CFP actually shows the largest scope possible, but it's likely you're going to see some part of it with Sound Transit. There could be opportunity, because these won't happen for a few years construction-wise, to actually go back and get some other grant funding so we can increase the project. Excuse me. Sorry. Meridian Avenue South and 240th, this actually appeared before because we had gone for a safety grant. We just applied another one as well. We're likely find out later this month if we get a grant. It's likely to be a roundabout. This one has kind of switched back and forth between a roundabout and a traffic signal. The likely version this time around is probably a roundabout. Beardsley Avenue widening, which would actually put another eastbound lane between the campus entrance on the north side to I-4 or 5. That was a grant, but we didn't get it. But we recommend keeping it on the contingency list, as well as 228th, which would essentially widen that road between 35th and 39th as well. Okay, home stretch, I can last. So new projects. So the first one is kind of interesting. There actually is no money in this year or next year, sorry, 19 or 20 budget, but I requested that it be put on this list just for visibility purposes. This is our highest suggested bridge replacement project, and we suggest thinking about replacing it in the next seven years or so. So we will obviously go after grants, but we will still have to get match money. So I just wanted to bring it to the forefront so people start thinking about, we probably have to fund the bridge replacement in the medium term. T-74 Botha Way Northeast widening, that's Botha Way, crosses the county border into Botha Everett Highway, would widen the road from Ridaway to 240th to either four or five lanes. We were successful in getting actually two grants, one from Snow County through that process, one to King County, and it allowed us to finish the design of the whole stretch. But we don't get the money till 22, 2022. I think our city engineer has some ideas about that, though. So another grant that we applied for was for sidewalk work on Ninth Avenue between the elementary school and State Route 524 on Ninth Avenue. We applied for a grant. Likely we would hear how well we think we're doing in about a month or so, but it relies on a legislature to approve next year's cycle, so we won't know for about a year, nine months. 130th Place and 132nd is another sidewalk improvement, fill in gaps. That one's interesting. We applied for a grant and Woodinville is participating in the match with us. We applied for some overlay money. Thank you. We'll have water. Thanks. We applied for overlay money and we got for Winita Woodinville Way, 750,000, again in 2021. T-86 is interesting. I would keep that one in mind. The idea there was to do access improvements on the north-south streets in downtown, so 101, 102, 103, 104, between Main Street and 185th. Improve the sidewalks, maybe even bike, so that people can get to the transit better, especially for ADA. We did not get the grant. We didn't score very well. However, we are in discussions with Sound Transit 3 to possibly help fund that. They have an access program, and we're also talking about some Sound Transit 2 money we might be able to use for that. 228th Street pavement, you might say we already did that. This is the portion that we didn't do. We competed well, but we didn't quite get the funding. We'd like to keep it on contingency list. And then the Canyon Park Subarea Plan, I think you guys know about. So that's my presentation. If you have specific project questions, I can try to answer them for you.
All right, questions? Councilmember McAuliffe.
So how does the criteria work? When I'm looking at Ninth Avenue Southeast non-motorized improvement, why does that not qualify for safe schools and sidewalk funds?
From our levy funds or our grant funds?
Grant funds from the safe schools and sidewalk?
Yes, I believe that's the program we applied for. So that's a grant that we're, is outstanding that we applied for, and we're waiting for word whether we are getting funding.
Okay, so that's where the request of the grant comes from?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Agnew.
Nicely done. You mentioned that Sound Transit would pay for what they felt was justified. Is our parking ride still justified according to Sound Transit?
Yes, so parking ride is in there. They basically have put BAT lanes in there. Usually you can convince them on sidewalks on the same side of BAT because they have to put in a curb and gutter anyway. I think the general road improvements and sidewalks on the opposite side become a little more challenging, especially since they're, from a budget point of view, they're somewhat challenged.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
I wondered if you could give me an order of magnitude for the bridge at 102nd.
I can probably provide that to you later.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm guessing it's a rather large amount.
It's actually not that bad.
Oh, okay.
There are probably several grants we would qualify for. The first one is a Bridge Replacement Advisory Committee grant. It's a federal grant. It's just for bridges, and I think we would compete fairly well for that. The hard part is typically when you do bridges, you also have to do approach work, and they don't pay for that. So we would go after other federal funds or also TIB funds. I think the hard part would be, we're always looking for more transportation funds, so at some point we have to make a priority. In other words, Botha Everett Highway widening that up is a priority, so you don't, may not want to use federal grant funding right now for this bridge. So we have to be very strategic where we put it in our timeline, I think.
Thank you.
Councilmember Olson. Oh, sorry, we not done, deputy?
No, it's done.
Okay. Turn the light off. Councilmember Olson.
So for the downtown contaminated soil and groundwater cleanup, I know that's high on our list of legislative priorities also. I was just curious, is there any way, if we get additional funds, to accelerate that? Or is it just kind of a, it's already going as fast as it's going and it's, the funds will just offset our city funds and less of our own funds and use more legislative state funds?
I think more of the latter. I think we continue to have discussions with ecology on ways that we can expedite things. I think there's somewhat, I mean, I think there's a little bit of everything that we can do. I think there's more we can do, and we're looking to do that, try to be more proactive in trying to do things, maybe overkill a little bit more in advance rather than wait two rounds. So I think there are things on our side that we're planning on doing. We continue to talk to them, and at every level, we try to remind them how critical this is. And that's about all I think we can do. So the additional funding would definitely help us in getting through it.
Yeah.
But I'm not sure we can make things move quicker.
Okay. So and then on the ST3 funding, I was just curious, kind of the mechanism, because I know a lot of these projects, you were speaking about tying directly with the 522 BRT. And so are we doing more of a project-by-project negotiations with them, or is it kind of just a whole package for the 522 BRT?
So for this, for Stage 3, which is the BAT lanes between Kenmore and Wayne Curve, we are specifically addressing that one, and we already have a draft agreement that we're both looking at, with the goal to sign it after we open bids, the council looked at it, they would have to take it to their board, and that would allow us to start constructing spring of next year, probably, spring, early summer. The other two projects is kind of ongoing. I think Sound Transit 3 is looking at multiple ways to deliver the projects. I think they are running into some time problems. We are continuing to offer up our services through the remainder of design and construction because we think we can probably get it done if they hand it off at a certain time. So we continue to communicate with them that we believe they have some options within downtown Bothel.
All right, thank you.
Councilmembers Orange.
I suppose this is the good time for me to insert, well, a couple of things, because I have a couple clarifying questions about transportation. One, going through this whole CFP packet, the teacher in me was thinking, every person who lives and works in Bothel, this should be a signed reading for them. Because when people look at our city and they want to know what projects, why aren't we doing this project? Why aren't we doing that project? There's so much thought that goes into this. I mean, I'm saying, I'm preaching to the choir here, but there's so much thought, and it's well organized here, that anybody who has questions about the direction that City of Bothel is going in on its, in its projects, why they're doing this and not doing that, you can see the underpinnings for future projects, 10, 15 years, 20 years down the road, has to happen with what is laid out here. So I was really appreciative to go through this. Clarifying questions, because the reading, I kind of got the impression that the roundabout on Meridian and 240th was, but the impression I get from you tonight is that it's more likely, a roundabout is likely to happen when that's addressed. Is that correct? Okay. And then the other thing is, I saw the, and I think I understand your clarification on safe streets and sidewalks. I saw that a couple of projects have been added to the capital facilities. And if I understand what you said tonight, it's because that when they're moved into this, then we can have matching grants on this? There aren't, two projects weren't just already added to the existing plans for safe sidewalks?
Correct. So we have a lot of sidewalk needs. If you talk to Rita, who's in charge of our sidewalk program, there's just a long list that we'll never get to all of them. But what the task force did was they actually prioritized it, which is very good. So this is our hope. We are hoping that between the Safe Streets Levy, the money we already had in our program, and potential grant funding, that we can get through the top tier of what they wanted. And that would at least distribute that sidewalk program or the task force program among the schools as they saw it. So that is kind of our goal. But you're right, there is a program with a list of projects, and I guess what I'm saying is, that program's not in the CFP. That's just the annual budget. The only projects that make it to CFP are the ones that get funded. And the ones that are funded typically would have a grant associated with it.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember McNeil.
Yes, I just had a question on the 345 million. How much of that is transportation? Don't know.
I don't know. I would have to get back.
Thank you.
Okay, so I just had just one quick question, minor, the T-81, the turning the railroad track over on East Riverside Drive into a trail. Recall, two years ago, it was expressed to the council by staff that that was, let's say, a very unlikely project to get funded due to the other amenities for the, I mean, funded by grants, because of the other amenities that are adjacent to it, like the Semamish River Trail. So I'm just curious, have we, do we still think that's worth putting staff time into to continue to pursue that additional trail?
That's a hard question. That's an excellent question. I think you wanted to get it to the point where you have that potential and then test the waters. And I think it's going to reflect on the council on how important that trail is, because there are other pieces of trail we need to finish. Even when, we got a partial grant for North Creek Trail along 524, but we still have to go back to the well with the grant for one more phase of it. And then we're just about done with North Creek Trail. So again, I think timing means a lot. There are, the trail grants don't necessarily compete with vehicular-type grants, so if you can separate them out, and as long as you feel or the city as a whole feels it's a high priority, I would say, you know, get to the point where you have that ability and then test the water and see what it's going to be.
Okay, so we're not there yet? We're not ready to test for it?
We're not even close to there yet.
Okay. I just thought of another one. The widening of Botha Way, no, it's not Botha Way, 522. I can't know, I don't know which phase it is, but the part, the phase that includes the Yakima Fruit Market frontage, do we know, I don't know, do we know if the Yakima Fruit Market is going to be able to still have parking in front of it or access if that road's wide, if that project's completed?
I think that's a challenge. And I think it's a lot of, the way it's laid out is going to be very difficult, because currently right now, that part of their angled parking in, part of that is right-of-way. So it gets very narrow there. I think, I think that's something that has to be looked at very closely.
And that would be with the Sound Transit Fund, Sound Transit 3 funding for the BRT lanes?
Yes, because the BAT lane would be on that side of the street. It would be, they call it inbound. It's more important for transit to get reliability toward the biggest destination, which is the Seattle side. Typically, when you're coming home, they feel like if you're off by a few minutes, it's not as dramatic as if you're late for work. So that's why that BAT lane on that side is more important. That's part of the whole overall look and what the city wants to do. If you start shifting things away from the Yakima Fruit Market, you get to a slope on the other side pretty quickly, and the costs start rising pretty dramatically. So all that kind of plays into what, how do you minimize impact as best as possible? But yes, it's going to be a difficult thing.
It's going to be a sad day if that happens to them, in my opinion, sorry.
I think staff has some ideas. We don't know what, we haven't obviously talked to the market, but I think staff has ideas.
Okay, good. And just, I just have a comment that I think it's fantastic that we have all these potential sidewalk projects. I've been doing this for seven years, and people have routinely asked and pleaded us to get sidewalks built. And because of the public support and passing the public safety, or in a public, I wanted to talk about that, I will by the end of tonight, I swear. The Safe Streets and Sidewalks Levy is just showing, you know, I don't know how many, do we have a rough idea of like dollar amount, like for every dollar that the city has invested, X amount of grant funding has come to fruition?
If we get our way and we're lucky, we're shooting for about 50%, so you double your money. That's what we're looking for.
Yeah, I just think, I think that's just fantastic. Sidewalks are important. Okay, well, thank you. We have, nobody signed up for public comment. Is there anybody that wanted to provide public comment on the capital facilities plan?
One more.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
No, we didn't need to talk about sewers. We need those. Sorry.
And while we're arranging, the estimated cost for the 102nd Bridge in the CFP is about
I'd like to answer, Councilmember McNeil, your question about how much of, how much of transportation in CFP. So I'm going to show you the project so you can get your answer now. Okay. So. So it's $184 million of transportation projects, and that number is all secured at the moment. It's actually 240 million if you're including unsecured abundance.
Okay, so good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Janet Gier, and I'm the Surface Water Supervising Engineer, but I was the interim Utility and Development Services Manager during the, this round of the Capital Facilities Plan. So I'm just going to talk to you briefly about those projects, how they got on the list, how they were prioritized. There are 25 of them on there, so I don't want to go through each one individually because ours aren't as fun and exciting to talk about. But, and then we'll go ahead and take any questions you have afterwards. So how do projects make it on the utility portion of the CFP? We talked a little bit about comprehensive plans. Each utility does a comprehensive plan approximately every five years, and during that time, we look at asset replacement and maintenance needs, as well as accommodating for growth. As part of those, there's always a public process, and through our customer action requests, we receive concerns regarding drainage or flooding issues, some capacity issues, enhancement opportunities, and then usually there's a utility project associated. utility project associated with land acquisition. We also get some from staff, which identify projects to either reduce pollution, repair or replace assets, and improve fish passage or habitat. So those are added to the list just for consideration. And then we get partner requests. So our other utilities, our conservation districts, other counties, WashDOT, whenever they have projects going on in the area, and there's opportunities for us to partner with them, a lot of those times, they'll request us to either partner, coordinate, or add ours to the list. So why are these projects important? Well, they're not super exciting. If you notice, your infrastructure usually, because there's something wrong. So you go to work every day and come home knowing that that faucet's going to work when you turn it on, and your sink and your, you know, bathtub and everything are going to function the way they are supposed to. So our mission, our goal is to make sure all of that infrastructure is there for you when you need it. And it's really important to fund the maintenance, because it's far cheaper than replacement. And oftentimes, if we conduct inspections and do preventative maintenance, we can extend the life of our assets and provide for proper planning so that there are emergency situations. So once they make it on the list, typically, in addition to what Gretchen said as part of the capital facilities plan, we prioritize these based on impact and significance. Are they impacting life safety, people, property, or the environment? A lot of times with the opportunity, as Steve mentioned, we've got grant funding rounds. So some of them will rise up the list if we are able to secure funding for them. And if other projects are going on in the area, and we can combine efforts to either coordinate for mobilization, for construction, or for design, we will take advantage of those opportunities. A lot of times with our utilities, it's also to manage risk or liability. Things come up sometimes, and it's our obligation to make sure that we are doing our due diligence for the ratepayers and the taxpayers in Bothell. So those will make it on the list as necessary. And then as part of mitigation, so like with Steve mentioning, a couple of the projects that are actually completed, you'll see them in the utility section of the capital facilities plan. For example, Horse Creek, while it's completed, we have obligations from the permitting to do monitoring and maintenance, and as well as the Sumamish Riverside Channel Project. Those both have monitoring and maintenance requirements, so they'll stay on the capital facilities plan until those are completed. Items also can be moved up and down the list as needed. So for example, Park Creek did get moved up from the beginning of the conversation with the capital facilities plan. And the Sumamish River, we need a project that's part of the Wayne Golf Course. That got moved slightly down just to align better with the property acquisition and some of the planning efforts there. And then how do we innovate to save on costs? So just very briefly, we learned a while ago that conducting small projects, we call them small works projects, is not super efficient, because a lot of the contractors don't want to bid on small projects. It costs a lot more to mobilize construction, that type of thing. And so what we typically do is we bundle them. So you'll see with water sewer and with storm, you'll see a couple of different projects. They'll say three different streets. And that's because we've combined three smaller projects into one to make them more competitive in the process and to save on, you know, efficiencies for mobilization for construction. We've also gotten a lot better about communication in between the different divisions and departments. We regularly discuss things like overlay projects, and we put in three different sections into the annual replacement budget for the utilities, so that if somebody opens up a street and we find out there's an issue, there's a budget there to replace that pipe right then and there, so we're not having to open that road again, trying to just make things as efficient as possible. And then the last thing is the strategies for replacement. A lot of times, designers will come in with different options, and we work very hard to make sure that we try to find efficiencies. How can we think kind of outside the box to either extend the life of an asset or a facility and see what we can do to either hold off if there's another project coming in the area, or to expedite things and obtain grant funding more quickly so that we can complete that work? So do you have any questions related to the utility portion of the capital facilities plan at this point?
They're good.
Okay. I'm going to turn it back to Gretchen at this point.
So that is our 2019-2025 Capital Facilities Plan, and I welcome your questions and comments.
Deputy Mayor.
I just had a couple of comments. A few weeks ago at the library, I had someone question, why would we do something and then the next year rip it out and have to redo it? And I got my answer tonight, which was that sometimes we have grants that we have to do the work, and we're not allowed to postpone it to when it makes more sense, or to wait for another project to be done. So I wanted to note that. And then I also wanted to mention to Janet, I really appreciate your slide about how we innovate to save costs, because I think oftentimes the public doesn't know what we're doing or trying to do to save costs. And we often get accused of wasting money. And so I always appreciate when we talk about our efforts to save money. So, thank you.
Wow, they're speechless. No other comments? I tried to shut this off earlier, so this is now when I say it's a public hearing. Are we good? Oh, there we go. Councilmember McNeil.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to thank everybody for all their hard work on this. This is very easy to read and understand and follow. I did have a question. Can you give me a comparison of where this would have been the five years previous and the five years future? Where do you, where do we see where we came from to where we're going as far as spending?
Comparing to the current CFP?
Yes.
And you want me to compare the current CFP to this one?
Yeah, 19 to 25 compared to the one we're just coming out of. I mean, if it's too big of an ant. Okay. The reason, the reason I wanted to ask that question is because obviously, spending is changing dramatically. And one of the things that I noticed from this presentation is the sheer amount of grants that the City of Bothell gets for this type of work, for parks, for utilities, for transportation. And I just wanted to make sure that we're focused on that a little bit, because we do bring a lot of money back into our community from outside. So it's one thing to go raise all these tax dollars and let the money go outside the city, but I think we do a very good job, after going through this presentation, of bringing those dollars back in. And I just wanted to make sure that we had a focus on that a little bit as well. So, thank you very much for sharing that.
All right. So I tried to do this earlier, but this is a public hearing. Does anybody want to provide public comment? Nope. Okay. It's time for a motion.
I move adopt the proposed resolution approving the 2019 to 2025 Capital Facilities Plan as presented.
Second.
Whoa. Okay. Let's move that, Deputy Mayor, and I think it was second, but you're always the quickest one. No, I'm looking at Councilmember Agnew. You guys got to get quicker. All right. So it's been moved to second to adopt the proposed resolution approving the 2019-2025 Capital Facilities Plan as presented. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I'd like to speak to my motion. I just wanted to agree with Councilmember Zornz when she talked about how it should be required reading for Bothell citizens. That will never happen, but I agree. And I think this document, if anyone wants to know why city government costs as much as it does, and why their project, their pet project doesn't get done, all they need to do is read, even skim through this document to understand the depth of our responsibilities and the level to which we go to try to provide the best service possible. And so I thank you, Councilmembers Zornz, for pointing that out. And I thank staff. It's an exhaustive list. It's an ambitious list. And I'm really proud that we are able to have those sidewalk grants, matching funds. So with that, thank you very much for all your work.
Any other discussion on the motion? Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you. And I also want to recognize the amount of work that goes into this, plus the application for grants, which takes many hours of your time, I know as well. But I'm very, I also wanted to bring to everyone's attention, and as we go through all the paperwork, there is a kind of a couple pages on needs and requests, and I think that outlines very well why the request was made and what the need is. So it's a little bit clearer than what we've probably seen on some of the other paperwork. So I just want to mention that, because I thought it was well done.
All right. Any other discussion on the motion? I just want to say real quick that one thing that I really appreciate about the capital facilities plan, especially this year around, is the amount of repair and maintenance that we're getting in front of, instead of kind of waiting for, you know, a pile of lift stations basically in four years that you've got to replace, whatever, half a dozen of them. We have a couple every year, and we raise the rates every, you know, every year to pay for that. And I think it's really an important thing that the city does, is that we try to make sure we keep ahead of things, we don't let things run into the ground. And I think that's going to pay off in dividends in the decades to come. So, appreciate it. Thank you, everybody, for your hard work on the CFP. And with that, let's vote. All those in favor passing? Oh, wait. Please vote.
So it might, the voting might actually work, but it's not going to display. So we, I don't know why it's not displaying. So you can try it, or we can do a hand vote.
Let's just do a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Aye. Passes unanimously. Okay. We are on to old business AV18-173 Quarterly Update on Progress Towards the Council Goals, 7th Quarter of 2017 and '18. And City Manager.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is your quarterly report. This is a scorecard we established at the beginning of 2017. It provides you a quarterly update on the progress that we're making on the strategic objectives towards achieving your council goals. So you can see the scorecard attached. We've highlighted in red the areas that we worked on in the 7th quarter. But I just wanted to highlight a couple of items that I thought you and the community would be interested in hearing about accomplishments during the 7th quarter. The council adopted a foundational code amendment for inclusionary affordable housing, and approved initial code amendments for additional dwelling units. We created a diversity committee for the city. It's called Dive In, and it's working on communicating about diversity and helping us continue to be a welcoming city. But of interest to the council might be that the city clerk will be meeting with the diversity committee to get their feedback on how to improve our outreach for your boards and commissions to different groups and do a better job maybe than we've been doing, so we get a more diverse group of candidates for you. Utility billing is intended to go live in early 2019. One of the things that we're learning when we compare ourselves to other cities is, and we've talked about this through the budget process, we do all of our IT implementations with existing staff, where other cities will hire additional staff to backfill the work while the staff is working on doing these major software implementations. We don't do that. And it's one of the challenges we had with two people working in utility billing. It did put us behind a little bit. Thankfully, in the 2019-2020 budget, we added some additional funding for parks, so that when they go through their implementation onto the asset management system, they're going to have a little bit of extra help. But we're excited to get that utility billing live for the community. We're working on a special events permit. Special events are our priority for the council. We'll be bringing that event permit to you on December 18th. If you look around the room and through City Hall, this is our fourth art exhibit here at City Hall, and those have been very successful and enjoyed by the community and those visiting and working here at City Hall. The fire department started a Twitter page. So if you're a Twitterer, there's another page for you to follow. So police has done a really great job. So I'm feeling a competition already between the two. So if you have additional information that you'd like to learn about fire, you can connect into their Twitter page. We did secure through King County $100,000 for our navigator program. It's a regional program. Our police chief was instrumental in really getting that group together, working with Councilmember Dombowski, talking to the King County Council, and securing funding. So we're very excited. There's not only funding now in the public safety levy, but additional funding to really make this a regional program, which is really going to help our community and the communities around us. For regional park, for the Canyon Regional Park Growth Center, we finished the final visioning report that was issued a couple of weeks ago. As Councilmember Agnew mentioned, and I'll give you another chance to say something if the mayor wanted to say something, propositions one and two passed. We're waiting for the final certification of that, but we want to thank the voters again for your confidence in us. Now we're into implementation phase. And so we'll be working with the staff and reporting back to the council on how we're going to implement these two propositions. And then also attached to this report is the Quarterly Safe Streets and Sidewalks Levy Report. And the Director of Public Works, Aaron Lenhard, would be able to answer any questions if you have any questions about that. But I just thought those were some nice highlights from the last quarter.
Well, I'm glad you brought up the public safety levies. I just, I just wanted to say to the public, I just feel like we got a big hug from the community by the willingness of 65% of the people to give, trust in us, to give us more tax dollars, to provide better services, services to the community, I think is, it's just, I'm still just so proud of our city and our community for getting all on the same page and doing ourselves a good thing. I think the values of our houses is going to go up from it. I think it's going to be a win-win for everybody. And I, again, I just feel like we got a big hug from the community. So I just wanted to thank the community for the supportive vote. Actually, it was an amazing vote that I didn't even anticipate to be that, that good. So I just wanted to throw that out there. And thank you for the quarterly report on the council goals. Is there any questions to the City Manager on the council goals? There we go. Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you. And I want to thank you for the update in the report. But there's a couple of things I'd like to point out, which I'm pretty excited about. And that is our rebranding effort that is moving forward that we should see in 2019. So many of you have been to some meetings on that. We're really excited, because that's going to do a lot for our city on bringing people to the City of Bothell, and to do a lot for tourism. The other one is, hopefully, we can work, move forward, because it was postponed until 2019, for our volunteer, city volunteer management, so that we can ask people in the city who value this City of Bothell so much. If they did pass Proposition 1 and 2, we want them to be volunteers as well and really contribute to the community. So I wanted to highlight that. And I think one of the reasons that we do so well, when we put forward something for the voters, as we did for Proposition 1 and 2, and that's about safety, but also it's about caring. And so when we look at our scorecard, and we talk about Care Day, and how we serve our people in this community with those kind of actions that provides them an opportunity for services for lower-income homeless people, the fire department, police department are all involved with safety information. It's a really important day for our people. So I wanted to highlight that. And then, thank you very much. We hired our Economic Development Manager, and we're looking forward to that work as well. So I'm very pleased with the update you have. Thank you.
We're good over here? All right. We're good over here? All right. So moving on to our last agenda item, AV18-174, the Draft 2019 Through 2021 Legislative Agenda and Policy Manual. And we have the Assistant City Manager to kick it off.
Some days, that is a longer walk. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of the council. I'm just going to introduce your lobbyist, Ms. Shelley Helder, from Gordon Thomas Honeywell Government Affairs. And with a couple of reminders, so one of them is that this agenda item tonight is your legislative priorities. So we looked at some other organizations' priorities last time, but this one is yours. So it should express the needs of the community as you see them. This is in preparation for reviewing this at the December 4th meeting. But then also, as part of the legislative strategy that we have brought on Gordon Thomas Honeywell to help us with, you will also be meeting with the three legislators from the 1st District on December 10th. So their expertise was brought on for this, both because legislative strategy can be a way to get more revenue in, and we knew that was a priority to you. This is their expertise, and so they do this all the time and know a lot about it. And then the strategy is what you're talking about tonight. What are the specific asks the city wants to ask for? Additionally, though, one of the other things, along with the meeting on December 10th with the legislators, they're also here to facilitate your involvement in Olympia in the upcoming legislative session. So if you would like to spend more time down there representing the city's priorities, that is also something they'll be able to help with, when it might be useful, what meetings to go to, et cetera. So they're here as a service to you. And with that, if there's no questions for me, I will depart.
Thank you. I'll just echo those comments very, very briefly before I get started. Shelley Helder, as I already said, your governmental affairs consultant, your lobbyist and Shelley Heldur, as Tori said, your governmental affairs consultant, your lobbyist and your voice in Olympia. Those of you who are interested in coming down to Olympia, we would greatly appreciate having you there. It is, it's great to have the folks that care and live and are representing that community by their, that have been voted to represent that community, be down there talking level to level with your legislators. So I'll just echo that. So good evening. Since I was before you last, there has been an election, and so I thought I would start off this evening by giving you a really brief update on the outcome of the election so far and what that means for the 2019 legislative session. As of earlier this afternoon, when I left my office, more results may have come in since then, but the results will be finalized on November 30. But as of now, House Democrats have picked up seven seats, and so they will be going into 2019 session with a 57 to 41 majority. Senate Democrats picked up two seats, and so they will have a 27 to 22 majority. There are four races, two in the House and two in the Senate, that are very close, and the outcome of those races could flip that split. Obviously, it won't change the majority, but it would change how many votes end up on either side. The, those four races, because they are so close, they are within the realm of a mandatory recount, and that is within a half a percentage point and less than 2,000 votes difference between those candidates. So those four races will undergo a mandatory recount prior to all the results being certified on November 30. In addition to the legislative races, there were four statewide initiatives. Voters approved three of those four, one of them 1634 preempting cities from taxing groceries and soda, 1639 imposing additional gun control measures, 940 relating to police use of force, and then voters rejected 1631, also known as the carbon tax initiative, and I will touch on that in a bit. So with the elections behind them, the legislator, the legislature is preparing for 2019. Session will begin on January 14, but there's much to do between now and then. Right now, they are going through reorganization, trying to figure out which committees, possibly combining committee subjects, eliminating committees, figuring out who sits on which committees, who's the leaderships of those committees and leadership of caucus. Just earlier this week, the Senate Democrats elected Senator Andy Bilig from the Spokane area to be their new majority leader. The previous majority leader, Senator Sharon Nelson, retired and did not run for reelection. So the two primary chair seats that we're going to be keeping an eye on in the House, one is House Transportation. Previously, that was led by Senator, Representative Judy Cliburn, and of course, she also retired this year. And Representative Christine Litten was the Chair of Finance. Both of those committees are very influential, and so their absences and whoever fills their roles will very much kind of direct the way that the legislature, especially in the House, moves forward. This week, the Senate, Senate is down in Olympia, actually tomorrow and Thursday, down in Olympia for committee days, so they're doing meetings, preparing for their priorities for the 2019 session. The House will have their committee days December 3, 4, and 5. And from there, there'll be kind of a pause in action until everyone is back in town in Olympia in, in January. So with that, I'll pause real quick before we dive into the specifics of your legislative program. Any questions? Okay, great. So as we've talked about before, there are two legislative documents that we are recommending the city develop. The first is your legislative agenda, and the second is your policy manual, and both those documents should be in your packet. As a reminder, the legislative agenda is a one-page document that outlines your top priorities. These are the items that you want your legislative delegation focusing their time and their energy on. The, the target audience for the legislative agenda is your, your legislative delegation and other legislators in Olympia that we'll be meeting with. The policy manual is a list of positions and issues that we anticipate will arise throughout the course of the session through various bills, and it gives us direction, gives us direction on what your position is on those issues. So it's support, oppose types of, of direction. So we'll start with the legislative agenda. One of the things that we've recommended is that the legislative agenda mirror the state's two-year biennial budget, and so that is why your agenda is 2019 to 2021. That matches the state's budget cycle. We've also recommended that the city adopt agenda, agenda priorities that are one priority per state budget. So that's one for the operating, one for the transportation, and one for the capital. So we'll start with the transportation budget request, and that is to fund improvements on I-405. I'm sure this is, this is not new for any of you, but I just want to explain a little bit of the context for why the language that's here is recommended and what the strategy is moving forward. So in the, the last budget cycle, the transportation budget included 20 million for engineering and environmental review on I-405 from 522 up to I-5. And the next stage of that work is to secure RightofWay. So there is a request from WashDOT of the legislature to include 20 million for RightofWay in this upcoming biennial budget. Once RightofWay is secured, and it can be done simultaneously, WashDOT has estimated that they'll need 450 million for construction of the north end improvements. So the language that you see in your legislative agenda is supporting those requests, the 20 million and the 450. They're, the 450 specifically as proposed by WashDOT funds some, some key projects, and I think it's important that we're clear on what that 450 is, is proposed to go towards. The first is that it would widen I-5 through the 522 interchange and build direct, direct access ramps and express toll lanes at that 522 interchange. The second is that it would extend dual I-405 express toll lanes from 522 to 527. So that'd be one new lane in each direction. And then it would build partial direct access ramps at 527 for access to the Canyon Park park and ride. So those are kind of the, the key components of what that 450 million would go towards. And we kind of, as, as a bulk, call that the prioritized north end improvements. When it comes to funding something as large as a $450 million request, the legislature has some options. And so in the past, when they're looking at a funding amount of this size, there's typically a transportation package that's being discussed. And it's, there has been conversations of a mini transportation package with the defeat of the carbon tax initiative. I think that it's more likely that those conversations will continue to arise, and there's more possibility that a mini package will be passed this coming session. So it's, there's possibility that these projects could be funded through that route. The other conversation that's happening, and I think you guys have probably heard rumors of it as well, is bonding of toll revenue. And so this is an alternative funding mechanism for the legislature to consider. The specifics of, of the bonding and all that, that, that would be for the legislature to consider, but in order for them to even have that option, they would need to authorize tolling on 405 South. They would need to define 405 and 167 as a single corridor, and they would need to extend the toll authorization on 167, which is scheduled to expire. So the, those are some critical decisions that would need to be made by the legislature before bonding of toll revenue even becomes an option on the table. So I, I share all of that because there are several steps in order to get us to securing that 450 million, and the language that we have recommended in the agenda is encouraging the legislature to do the work, do the hard work to get to the point where that 450 is a reality, and that it would be done in this biennial budget so that WashDOT has the time to do the construction in time for Bus Rapid Transit going online in 2024. So that is the transportation component of your legislative agenda. Before I move on to the next item, I'll just pause to see if there are any questions. Okay, great. So the next.
Sorry, we got one. Councilman McCullough.
Thank you. So while this is the City of Bothell's legislative agenda for transportation, are there other, other cities within this corridor that are also going to be supporting this?
Great question, yes. And I think Deputy Mayor Dorr may be able to speak to this more so than I, but yes, there is a strong stakeholder group, and we're actually getting ready to convene a group amongst the lobbyists that represent the East Side Cities so that we're all coordinated in messaging. So the next item on your agenda is Canyon Park Subarea Plan. In working with city staff, we are recommending that the city request $400,000 to be used towards the subarea plan. This would be a request from the state's operating budget, and my understanding is that there are initial portions of the subarea plan that are either completed or in the process of being completed. This 400,000 would go towards the last two, last two phases, which are transportation analysis and environmental review. So that's our, our recommendation. This one's a little bit more straightforward, but obviously very important. The next item is the request from the state capital budget, and this is for funding for downtown revitalization. Based on the feedback that you all shared with us when we were here with you last, we're recommending that the city request 1.5 million from the state capital budget. That is a pretty ambitious capital budget request, and there are a few reasons that we're recommending that. One is the, we think the capital budget is the greatest opportunity for the city to secure funding this coming session, and one of the reasons that you all hired us is because we're, we're wanting to get that return on your investment, and so we see this as the greatest opportunity for that. The, the capital budget is expected to be the largest in state history because it is a function of the state's operating budget, and with the change in the way that the state funds K through 12 education, the operating budget will be the largest in state history as well. So I do, of course, want to caveat that with the fact that the large capital budget, the majority of that will be going towards K through 12 construction, but there will be some that set aside for local community projects, which is the bucket of money that we'll be competing for with this request. Yes.
Were you done with that one? Because I have a question about that.
Almost, almost done, but I'm happy to, happy to answer your question.
I don't want to interrupt. Go ahead.
So I just want to share that this is, and specifically, this is being framed as a downtown revitalization because that's what it is. The money would go towards continuing the cleanup on the site downtown in order to get it ready for development. It, it is a cleanup project. It would not preclude the city from pursuing additional MACA funds or additional competitive grants through ecology or other, other avenues, but this is, would be framed as downtown economic development revitalization, and that's why it's eligible for capital budget funding. If this were a cleanup site and it weren't located in a downtown area, I don't know that it would compete as well, and I, we would not recommend it for this budget. So I think that is all for that item, so happy to answer your question.
So you said 1.5 million's kind of, I don't want to say greedy, but rather large for a local government ask in the capital budget?
Yeah, typically, capital budget appropriations are around a million or less, and so 1.5 is ambitious, but again, we think that it's, it's worth pursuing. One of the, the downsides to pursuing a large request is that if you don't have the money to make up the difference between what you request and what you're given, you're still, you're still expected to complete the project and complete a significant portion of the project that would provide public benefit. Since this is still in the city's plan to complete this cleanup, we recommend that we, we go for the bigger number.
So just real quick, during the budget process, I remember something was brought up that the cost of actually doing this cleanup was significantly more than what we first estimated. Is this reflective of the new cost? Okay. Just, yeah, because we want to be able to finish, and so that the, if they gave us a million, we have the other, so we have secured funding to clean up?
We're using REIT monies.
Okay.
So we have, this would be, this would be a tremendous help because then we wouldn't have to use other monies. That's part of the balancing of the budget, the challenges that we had. That's why the numbers changed because we ended up with the additional 1.5 million in additional cleanup. So this would be very, very helpful for the budget.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any other, anybody else? Keep going.
The last two items on your legislative agenda are items that are in support of larger causes, and the reason that they're on the agenda and not in the policy manual is because they have a significant impact on the city. The first is the Bridge at Bothell landing. Earlier this year, city staff applied for a grant through the Washington Wildlife Recreation Program, and the project was ranked very well. It was ranked tied for fifth out of 34 projects, which is, that's very good. And it was a, it was an extensive grant program. So the way that that grant program works is, once you're ranked, the legislature decides how much funding to put towards the overall program. Depending on how much funding is put towards it determines how much the city ends up receiving. Because the project is so well-ranked, the legislature can fund it as low as 90 million, and the city would still receive a little over $1 million towards the Bridge at Bothell Landing. So WWRP is requesting 130 million for those projects. We're, we're supporting that request on behalf of WWRP and recommending that that be included in the 2019-21 capital budget. If it is, again, the city stands to receive a little over $1 million towards the Bridge at Bothell Landing. And then the last item on the legislative agenda is definitely not the least. This one is in regards to the Criminal Justice Training Commission, additional funding for the Basic Law Enforcement Academy classes. Based on the backlog right now, they're requesting an additional, or requesting 19 classes for the, per year in order to address the new hire delay. And with the passage of Prop 1, I think this is even more timely for you all to have this as a, as a priority item. And since Prop 1 has passed, since we included this document in the packet for this evening, I would recommend that we update this language to reflect the fact that the city will be needing to hire, I think, 13 additional officers. I think that's, that's a message that your, your legislators and legislators as a whole need to hear, that there'd be significant impacts to the city if not for the ability to get those officers into the academy. So with that, that's the legislative agenda. Yeah, is there a question?
Sorry, Councilman McCullough.
That's all right. It seems to me, from my recollection, that the Criminal Justice Training Center funding has been behind for many, many years. And so what are the chances now of actually bringing up that backlog? I mean, it's been years, and they still are not currently funded at their need.
Yeah, yeah, you're right. This is something that has been a city, a city as a whole, priority for several years, and I'm, I'm not sure how successful we'll be with getting the, the 19 classes that are needed. I think one of the challenges has been that CJTC does an estimate of how many classes they need based on what they anticipate the, the new hire need to be. I think if, if that estimate is not accurate, there still ends up being a delay, and there's not the flexibility to add on new training classes if they don't have the money in the budget. So that's one of the, the reasons behind making this a 19 class per year request.
And this is also something other cities are going to be targeting as well.
Yes, this is an association of Washington City priority.
Thank you.
So the, the second document that you all have is your policy manual, and that is a much more lengthy document. So rather than going through that item by item, I'll just encourage you to read it. This is, again, the audience for this document is myself and Brianna as your governmental affairs consultants, as well as city staff, for us to know what issues you care about and care to weigh in on in Olympia. If there are items that are on here that are, are missing or they're misrepresented, please let us know. We are hoping to have feedback from you all on this, on these documents by the end of the week, so that would be November 16. We'll incorporate that feedback and put it into final versions of the document for your final approval on December 4. And as was previously mentioned, on December 10, we have scheduled a meeting for you all to visit with your legislative delegation, and so that'll be a time for you to sit down and talk with them about the priorities of the city and why these are so important to Bothell and the citizens of Bothell. So with that, that ends my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Councilman McCullough.
Again, thank you. How do we best communicate what we'd like to see incorporated into this document?
Yeah, I think if Tori wants to be the one that gathers all the feedback from you all, I can work with her to make sure that it gets incorporated into the documents.
Excellent, thank you.
Or, or now, yeah. If you have feedback that you'd like to verbalize now, that would be great as well.
I do have a burning one. I just mentioned, when we talk about downtown revitalization and the cleanup money of $1.5 million, you know, you describe it as a healthier environment and a healthy economy. I'd really like to see much more teeth into that statement. It is really preventing us from selling property that we really, you know, have told the citizens that we would sell so that we could pay the debts that we have for City Hall. And so it's really important that the language is very strong there, not just a healthy economy. It really has to do with, you know, our budget and how we budget our money to pay for our debts.
Yeah, I think that's great feedback. And I forgot to mention that for each of these priorities, specifically the Canyon Park Subarea Plan and the downtown revitalization, we will be developing a one-page document that explains the broader context of why these are such important requests and goes into more detail. Because we're trying to fit these all on one page, it doesn't give us the ability to
I would like to see that also done for the 405 transportation piece as well.
All right, any other feedback or comments? Deputy Mayor?
I don't have anything specific in mind. However, under environment, I feel like there should be a discussion, given that one of our new council goals is sustainability in terms of what we might want to see happen in the legislature and since 1631 failed. So I don't know if that's a conversation we can have or what, but it seems, since it's one of our priorities, it should be reflected in our legislative packet.
All right, any other comments? Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you. I would be interested in seeing something noted about 522 and potentially 527. You know, our northern connection between downtown and north Bothell, as well as 522 being that east-west connection from 405. But I'd just like to get everybody else's feedback on those two as well.
So we have a couple, I guess, questions of council from other council members on the floor. Do we want to take, is there any other questions that we want to raise, and so we can just go through them all one at a time? All right, so the first question was adding to our environmental section of the, what do we call that?
Policy manual?
Policy manual, thank you. Just in general, just want to add, okay. And then the other one was to add 522 and 527 improvements to the transportation section of the policy manual? Yeah. Who would like to go first? Deputy Mayor?
So I have a question of Shelley. In the first document, the one-pager, you had mentioned it was important to have a single focus. Do you see any reason not to add Councilmember McNeil's suggestions on the longer packet? Because they're different projects. I'm just wondering if, what your recommendation would be.
Right, no, I mean, I think the policy manual, that's the place to include projects that are important but aren't the top priority. So I think it would be appropriate, if you have other priorities, to include that in the policy manual.
So in that case, I would support what Councilmember McNeil suggested.
Do you have anything about the environmental part that you were, any suggestions you want to add?
Well, I'm thinking off the cuff, so I don't have anything specific. I just, it's a new priority for us, and I guess I would maybe want to consult with staff in terms of what they think would be beneficial to the city to add to that statement.
And we do have two other touches with this anyways, right?
So this would be, this evening is the opportunity for feedback, and then there's, you can make edits throughout the week, I believe, in order to have the final document incorporated into the December 4th agenda. Comments would need to be received by the end of the week. So December 4th would be when you, it comes before you and you vote on final adoption.
Okay. All right, Councilmembers, earnings.
This is a quick question, comment, thinking out loud when we talk about an environmental component. I know the state has mandated opening up channels for fish passages, and if there's anything on our inventory for our roads, my recollection, the priority is along major roads, freeways, highways, that that's where the state is going to fund opening up fish channels. And I guess if there are any modifications on fish channels that fall within Bothell on our major roads, that might be, you know, a purposeful point for us to include going to the state, addressing with the state if they're handing out and assigning dollars for that. This might be a good time to do that. I don't know that there are any, but if there are--
Any feedback on Councilmember McNeil adding 522 and 527 improvements?
That's what I was thinking.
Okay. Okay. How about this side? Anybody over here got anything? There, Councilmember Agnew?
Yeah, I think we should add it into the policy manual. I don't have a problem with that at all. And I think we really need to talk about the environment as much as we can to try to get the funding that we need from ecology, because I think all of us here and citizens want those sites cleaned up so we can turn around and sell them.
Thanks, I'll pipe in. So yeah, 522, 527, no problem, put that on there. I just have a lot of concern about, I guess, shining a light. I mean, every city has culvert problems where their fish passage issues. I don't know if we necessarily want to inventory those and put that out there to the state and everybody else to look at, that we, we want money for those because unless we already had a project, you know, that we're working on, like an actual, you know, a road that we need to take the culvert out that's there and put it in a fish-passable one, that's kind of the opportunities that would really be the best, but just have standalone culvert projects to go through the system. And I'm a fish guy for 15 years. I've been doing this for a long time. I just wouldn't want to put that out there, that we would want that on our agenda.
That's a good question.
True.
Because you know the history of the city more than I do, the, now I've done a brain dump, the lake that feeds into Horse Creek, that all the RVs are parked around.
Lake Pleasant.
Lake, thank you. I knew it started with a P. So Lake Pleasant, is that all up to, in your opinion, up to speed on what needs to be provided in getting the water from Lake Pleasant down to the wetlands? Because if we're reworking 527, that might be a place to look for dollars if that needs to be done. I don't know. I'm just, you know--
I just, I can tell you, if we widen 527 through there, there's wetlands right on the border of the road. So we'll be into wetland mitigation.
Okay.
So yeah, we'll be working on wetlands. But I should probably leave that to staff to talk about those things, sorry. I don't know, let's ask the steamwork. All right, so I think we have it on there, 522, 527 on the list, and then if Deputy Mayor can get something on there for environmental stuff, working with staff, that'd be good. Sound good?
I have a comment.
Councilmember McAuliffe?
I have a question, I guess, more than a comment. When you talk about bonding of the toll revenue, is that something that we need to request, that the bonding becomes part of money returned for those improvements to that, to the toll road?
Good, good question. The language that is on your agenda is intentionally loose for the legislature to determine whether bonding is the appropriate route to go. In conversations with your delegation, they did indicate that knowing whether the city supports or opposes bonding of toll revenue would be helpful for them. So I guess the most direct answer to your question is no, there doesn't need to be formal direction in these documents. But if the city is vehemently opposed to bonding of toll revenue, I think that is something that we should know now and we should share with the legislative delegation, so they're aware of it.
And I think that's important because from what I remember in a conversation with them, is they wanted some backup on bonding, and that we could give that to them if we prioritized it. Is that correct?
Yes, yep.
Deputy Mayor?
So I was going to ask that question until you said you specifically chose the language. We did approve the ETP legislative agenda last week, which includes the words, I think, accelerate funding of the 405 master plan with special attention to the north and south ends through either direct funding or tolling of bonds. So I guess what you're saying is we don't need to necessarily put that on our legislative agenda as long as they kind of know. And we can also include it. We'll be working on another stakeholder letter, and I assume there might be some discussion about putting language into that, so.
I think if that's a conversation that you've all had, and that's language that you're all comfortable with, it would be great to have that incorporated into this document. Because what it does is it gives the legislature options, so they know these are options that are supported by the City of Bothell.
Yeah.
So I just didn't want there to be any hesitation in the language as it was presented, so it was intentionally soft-pedaled. But if you all have had that conversation already, and that's something that you're on board with, that would be helpful.
Oh, I'm glad Councilmember McAuliffe brought it up. I just assumed that you knew that, and you chose the language that you did anyway. So yes, we had that discussion last week, and I'm happy to forward the ETP legislative agenda to you so you can see exactly what that language was. But yeah, we already discussed it, and we're fine with it, so.
Great.
All right, any other, anything else? No, good? Okay, so I have three different announcements I'm supposed to make. Well, that's the end of the agenda, unless you want to sue anybody, are we good for executive session? You're good? Okay. All right, so one council member wanted me to bring up that our thoughts and prayers are with the people in California with the fires and also the mass shooting. I don't know if that qualifies as a mass shooting, but it was significant. Estelle Rizzo, so she passed away. She was our court administrator. She retired in December 2011. She fought cancer for many years and is now not with us. And then the last one was that the council wants to say Happy Thanksgiving, and I know that around the table at my house, we always say what we're thankful for, and I can assure you what I'm going to be thankful for, and that's the community showing the support that you did for the city and the city council in the last vote for propositions 1 and 2. Does anybody else want to tell us what you'll be thankful for? No, it's okay. All right, those were the three announcements I had. Does anybody else have any announcements? Since I'm adding parts to the agenda. Okay, is there a motion adjourned?
It's on the second.
It's moved by Councilmember McNeil, seconded by Deputy Mayor. Raise your hands, aye. Aye, we're adjourned.